To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Mike Stites.
Here.
And councilmember Karen Berry is absent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th, 2010?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
If a motion to approve the minutes seconded by Councilmember Demott, any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. We have two proclamations tonight. I will ask Mrs. Wheatridge to please come forward to read the proclamations. And our first one is Domestic Violence Prevention Month. And I believe that is Family Tree. If you have some folks from Family Tree, please step forward and join Mrs. Wheatridge for the proclamation. Feel free to say a few words after the proclamation is read.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheatridge. Good evening. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that touches the lives of people of all ages, leaving a devastating impact on women, men, and children of every background and circumstance. And whereas since the 1994 passage of the Violence Against Women's Act, we as a nation have strengthened our response to this crime and increased services for victims, yet far too many women and families in our community are still affected by domestic violence. And whereas during the 2009-2010 fiscal year, Family Tree provided 7,424 nights of safe shelter to 248 women and 183 children. And whereas children who witness or are exposed to domestic violence often struggle with behavioral or emotional problems, these children feel unsafe, isolated, anxious, depressed, angry, and distrustful of authority figures. Unfortunately, many of them carry patterns of abuse into their future relationships. Our efforts to address domestic violence must include these young victims. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to be the voice for victims in our community by supporting organizations that provide advocacy, resources, and education to those facing social isolation. Now therefore, in recognition of our commitment to ending violence with our homes, our communities, and our country, I, Jerry DiTullio, do hereby proclaim October 2010 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Wheatridge. I urge all citizens to participate in Awareness Month activities while educating themselves about the impact of domestic violence. This month, let us remember the victims, celebrate the survivors, and work together to break the cycle of violence.
Thank you. Family Tree, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you know, Family Tree has a long history of being in the Jefferson County and the Wheatridge community, and we appreciate the continued support that the City Council and the Mayor show Family Tree in our mission to help people overcome child abuse, domestic violence, and homelessness, become safe, strong, and self-reliant. This is one more example by adopting this proclamation of helping us get the word out and choosing to create an awareness campaign that we've named this year Be The Voice, so that we can help those who don't have a voice when fighting the issue of domestic violence in their homes. So we appreciate, again, the City Council and the Mayor partnering with us to help us get the word out and raise awareness in our community. We'd like to also invite you, we have a campaign called Be The Voice for Domestic Violence Awareness Campaign activities, and we're also promoting purple ribbon, I'm sorry, purple wristbands to end domestic violence in our communities. And so we invite the City Council and the Mayor to join us in that campaign as well. And I'd like to ask Jane Pemberton, who's managing director of Family Tree's Domestic Violence Services, to just say a few brief words about some more of the work that we're doing in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for recognizing the gravity of domestic violence in our community as we see every day, and I'm sure a lot of your officers and members see as well. As the proclamation said, we've just seen a big increase in our domestic violence services. We have actually four programs. I think most of you probably know the Women in Crisis Shelter. But among all four of our programs, we saw a 21% increase in the numbers of services. And through our crisis line and our direct service programs, we helped over 15,000 people last year. As I said, the Women in Crisis Shelter, as you know, provides emergency services to women and children every year. And we know that we will always, always need that emergency service. But we've also realized that, we've done some research and looking at some national studies, and have seen that evidence-based outcome research has shown that the two major things that have helped make the biggest difference for victims of domestic violence is that they increase their knowledge of resources in the community and increase their strategies for safety. So with that in mind, we do that, of course, at the shelter, but we have expanded our outreach advocacy and counseling program, which is based out of the Carlos Family Center, and realize that a lot of victims of domestic violence are not going to come to a shelter for a lot of valid reasons. And so we want to be sure that we have, are providing that advocacy and support they need in the community, and that we are seeing a lot of people come there as opposed to coming to shelter. Or they may come there after they leave the shelter for the ongoing support and education. Other pieces of the continuum of services that we provide for victims of domestic violence include our legal advocacy program with protection order clinics and free family law clinics. As I said, our counseling program, and then our parenting time program, which provides safe exchanges and supervised visits with the focus on keeping the children and the victim parents safe. And as Scott said, we will be providing and joining and doing activities all month long, and hope that you will join us. The first one is October 5th is the Day of Unity Rally at the Capitol. And we invite as many people as can make it. And if you, we invite our clients, and we invite staff members, and there'll be legislators there. And then, again, the state proclamation will be read. And we are providing, Family Tree will be having our, on October 7th, our denim and diamonds night, our silent auction. And it should be a lot of fun, just the title, I think, sounds like fun. And so I hope that you'll be able to join us. I have some cards here that talk about some of the events we'll be doing. And we thank you again so much for the proclamation and your efforts in helping us combat domestic violence in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next proclamation tonight is Walk to School Day. I think we have some students from Prospect Valley. I was going to ask those students to come up to the podium with or without your parents. Everybody is welcome. And Mrs. Wheatridge will read that proclamation. And Molly Hansen from Liv Well, Wheatridge will step forward, and I'm assuming say a few words. So, welcome from Prospect Valley. Did you guys all walk here tonight, too?
Whereas October is Colorado Pedestrian Month and Colorado Walk to School Month, and October 6th, 2010, is International Walk to School Day, as well as Colorado Walks Wednesday. And whereas walking contributes to improved health, safer streets, stronger communities, a cleaner natural environment, and reduced traffic congestion and fuel consumption. And whereas acknowledging that local government officials are extremely interested in addressing the childhood obesity epidemic, and want to take action to address healthy eating and active living. And whereas the City of Wheatridge, City Council recently adopted the Wheatridge Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan and the Mixed Use Zone Ordinance, which will lead to the development of additional pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure facilities and compact mixed-use development that enhances a pedestrian environment throughout the city of Wheatridge. And whereas children and parents from 5,000 schools in all 50 states and community leaders throughout the world are joining together to celebrate International Walk to School Day. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wheatridge Mayor and City Council proclaim that Wednesday, October 6th, 2010, is International Walk to School Day, and encourage children and their families to walk to school and witness thereof on this 27th day of September 2010. Thank you so much for having us today. I'm going to say just a couple words, and then we're going to turn it over to our special guests. I do have a handout for City Council. Really quickly, again, my name is Molly Hansen. I'm the Live Well, Wheatridge Coordinator, and we are a community coalition working to reduce and prevent childhood and adult obesity here in Wheatridge. We have some very special guests today. Really quickly, I just want to thank you for your support of Walk to School Day. This is a wonderful opportunity to partner with our schools and our administrators and our residents to look at some of the challenges that are related to supporting walking to school, walking or biking to school. We know children need 60 minutes of physical activity, and it is a CDC best practice or recommended strategy to create routes so that children can walk and bike to school safely. So many of you are joining us either at Pennington or Prospect Valley. So we thank you very much. Let's see, Compass Montessori already supported or implemented their Walk to School Day, I think, a couple weeks ago. So now I'm going to turn it over to a couple of our folks. Do you want to say a few words?
Thank you very much for having us. We would just like to say that kids need at least 60 minutes of exercise to stay healthy. That is why Walk and Bike to School Day is so important, because you get to spend time with family and friends and still get a little bit of that exercise in.
Thank you for your support.
Would you like to know the name of the students who actually presented today, really quickly? Okay, we had, we had April McMullin and, do you want to tell your name?
April McMullin.
Kate Alms.
Francesca and Isabella Briganti.
Great. Well, thank you, thank you very much. We also want to say a big thank you to Chris Briganti and Dana Alms. These are parents who are supporting Walk to School Day and safe routes efforts at Prospect Valley. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move on to citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward for public comment. Please spell your last name for the record, and state your last name for the record and your address or your city. And please step forward to the podium.
Did you just want last name?
Last name's fine, and spell your last name for the record.
My last name is Martin, M-A-R-T-I-N. And I just have a question for the City Council and the Mayor. And that is why is the Internal Affairs Committee for the Police Department of Wheatridge not in the phone book, so you don't know about it? And why does it not contain anyone but police on it? Why is there no civilian people to judge what the police do in this city? And that's all I have to say.
Oh, thank you. And anybody who wishes to respond to that from council will respond after public comment when everybody's done. So that's reserved for council or staff to make a comment afterwards. Please spell your last name for the record.
Nancy Snow, S-N-O-W. I can't compete with those little kids. But I'm speaking tonight to issue an invitation from Wheatridge United Neighborhoods for an event that will take place here in this chamber a week from Friday, October 8th. Everybody in Wheatridge at home, I want you to listen. I hope you will come. You have to vote for 17 different offices in November, and there are 13 ballot issues. And ordinarily, I know, when you get your ballot, you think, oh, my goodness, who are these people? We have invited them. We have invited 38 candidates. Five are sending substitutes, and 32 are going to be here. They don't get long to speak. They only get three minutes, but there's a blessing in that, too. And I think you would enjoy it if you would come. It's a lot easier than trying to read all the literature that comes to your door, all the signs, when you really don't know who those people are. So I hope you will come. The first part, I want to mention, this year, we're going to do all the Wheatridge issues first. There are three Wheatridge ballot issues, and one, our Vada Fire District, which only affects people in the northwest corner of the city. And then we're going to do all the candidates, and then we're going to do six of the nine state issues. It's a long evening. We decided we couldn't do all of them. And then I'd like to issue a special invitation to you. I would very much like to see it if the City Council would come and greet, and meet, meet and greet all these different candidates. Remember, half, a third of them are going to be your elected representatives, too. I think it would be very nice if you would come. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else here for public comment? This portion of public comment is reserved for council or staff. Would like to respond to any comments or questions from the public. Chief, did you want to respond to the question on the internal affairs issue at this time?
Certainly. I'll make my comments brief. Our professional standards units follows the best practices of the National Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, as well as the International Association of Chiefs of Police and the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police. I'll have to look at the phone book. I haven't used a phone book in a long time, but I'll look there. But any of our employees or supervisors take complaints, citizen merely has to, you know, call into the police department and state that they wish to make a complaint. And we will have a supervisor contact them in person or speak to them over the telephone in regards to taking their complaints. We even go so far as even to take anonymous complaints against our police officers. We have looked into Mrs. Martin's complaints, and councilmember Reinhardt and I, and councilmember Berry, if she's available, are slated to meet with her Thursday morning to address her concerns with the police department. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, move on to approval of the agenda, or any changes to the agenda tonight? The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item one, Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. A motion to accept the 2009 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR. Section 10.15 of the Municipal Charter for the City of Wheatridge requires that an independent audit be performed annually of all city accounts. The CPA firm of Swanhorse and Company, LLC, performed the audit of the city's financial statements for the year end December 31st, 2009. As is reported in the attached management letter from Swanhorse and Company, the following conclusions were reached from the audit. One, we noted no transactions entered into by the city during the year that were both significant and unusual, and of which, under professional standards, we are required to inform you, or transactions for which there is a lack of authoritative guidance or consensus. Two, we evaluated the key factors and assumptions used to develop the estimates in determining that they were reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. Three, we provided management with a schedule of audit adjustments. Management has determined that a significant adjustment to the Wheatridge Urban Renewal Authority's account records to report the land held for resale at estimated market value. Because it is held for resale, it must be reported at market value, which will require the city to continuously evaluate the carrying of the property. Four, we are pleased to report that no such disagreements with management arose during the course of the audit. And five, we encountered no significant difficulties while performing our audit. A representative from Swanhorse and Company will be at the September 27th City Council meeting to present the 2009 CAFR to City Council for acceptance.
Thank you. We'll have a quick presentation from Swanhorse, and then we'll have a motion after that. Ms. Langworthy?
Good evening. I'm Wendy Swanhorse with Swanhorse and Company. And I have a couple documents here that you've hopefully had a chance to look at at least briefly. One is the actual financial statements. And then this is our management letter, which is our communication to you guys. I'm going to stick with this letter, and I won't go through much of this document unless you have questions on anything. I'd be happy to try and answer. But this letter tells you what it is we do, and that simply is you, as the council, have hired us to tell you that we believe the numbers in this report are fairly stated in all material respects. And within this document, you'll find our opinion that tells you that we think these numbers are fairly stated. Our other responsibility to you is if we identify any deficiencies in your internal control, that we would describe those and present those to you in this letter. You'll find a list of a few things that we've represented in this letter. There was really nothing we found that was material to what you did. We did propose the adjustment that you mentioned, because some of that land that the Urban Renewal Authority is holding was, was on the books higher than what market value was. So the market value of that property was written down in the process of our audit. We had, we described some internal control issues that we found while we were doing the audit. Some related to grants, to your system security, to the system over at the recreation center, and some things like that where we found some errors. Nothing that caused the financial statements to be materially misstated, but just places where we think you can tighten up your controls somewhat. And all of those have been discussed with management already. And I don't know where they are in the process of responding to those, but all of those are described in here. I think with that, maybe what I'd like to do is just take questions from you, if you have any, if you want more details or anything else you'd like me to, to talk about.
Any questions from comments, or from council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Goff, did you want to say anything on the checks and balances?
Yeah, I would just like to respond to Ms. Swanhorse's comments about the recommendations. We, staff has been made aware, made aware of the recommendations. And fortunately or unfortunately, we had a IRS audit about the same time as our financial audit was going on. So they, they found a few of the same things on some of the taxability issues with some of our benefits that we provide to employees. So both that audit and the financial audit has provided us a list of things that we're going to be working on to tighten up our controls.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to accept the 2009 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report from Swanhorse and Company, LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Demott. Discussion on the audit, item one. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item two, councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce motion to approve the annual police radio system contract payment to the West Metro Fire Protection District in the amount of $88,586 for police radio system services. In 2005, the City of Wheatridge entered into an IGA with the West Metro Fire Protection District for annual contracted radio services. These services include technical support, system maintenance, equipment repair, a lease agreement for the Mount Morrison antenna site, and associated software and hardware costs. These services have provided significant improvement to the department's radio infrastructure and improve public safety in our community. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the annual police radio contract payment to the West Metro Fire Protection District in the amount of $88,586 from account number 012047004 for police radio system services.
Is there a second? I have a motion for approval seconded by Councilmember Jay. Discussion, item two. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item three is Resolution 50-2010. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 50-2010, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $57,782 for the abatement of outstanding property damage from the July 2009 storm. The residential structure located at 11480 West 44th Avenue was substantially damaged beyond reasonable repair on July 20th, 2009. A notice in order to abate the damage has been posted on the property and served to the owner without response or action. In excess of one year since the date of damage has passed, the condition of the property remains unchanged, and the building division wishes to proceed with the process of abatement. A written estimate has been received for abatement of the property by the city's approved on-call demolition services firm, Alfred Construction, totaling $66,574. An asbestos assessment of the structure has been conducted and certified by the state, with the determination being that no asbestos abatement will be necessary. The building division's 2010 abatement funding was budgeted at $10,000. Approximately 1,208 of that has been expended, leaving $8,792 in that fund. A supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $57,782 is necessary to conduct the abatement. If authorized by the council, the city will go through a bid process to select the contractor, since the value of work exceeds $25,000.
Motion's in order.
Motion in order. I move to approve Resolution number 50-2010, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $57,782.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval seconded by councilmembers Langworthy and Sang. Discussion on the main motion?
I have a question. Have we established the process and the procedure for leaning the property and recoup it if it's sold under sheriff's sale?
We have. Staff's checked with the attorney's office. I don't know if Mr. Dole would like to comment on that.
Our code provides for us to certify to the county treasurer for collection, same manner as taxes, any charges that we, that we incur, any costs we incur as a result of abatement under our code. And so that's one of the many remedies we have, but it's really the easiest and the best. It's certified to county treasurer, gets put on the property for taxes, along with the tax bill. And if that is not paid, of course, it gets sold for taxes, and we get paid as a result of that sale.
Thank you.
Are we, are there any questions? It's, it's open, sure.
I just want to comment that as a general policy, I have reservations about moving on to private property and taking actions against private property owners. And there, but there are several reasons that this, I support this, this action. First, we do have the ability to be recouped, so it won't be paid ultimately. We hope it will not be paid by the taxpayers. Second, it's effectively an attractive nuisance in the community, and it's just, it's unsightly. So in light of those conditions, I'm going to support the pass of this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Jade?
I support it as well, because it's not only unsightly, it's unsafe and a temptation. So I, I'm in agreement with going ahead.
Great. Any discussions? Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item four, councilmember Reinhardt?
Item number four is a motion to approve the annual revenue of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement Program and the Agreement program in the amount of $60,838.52. Approval of the Microsoft's Software Licensing Enterprise Agreement renewal insight will allow the city to continue to stay current on its Microsoft licenses. The EA provides licensing and support for all Microsoft software throughout the city as well as periodic upgrades. The annual renewal of EA will cost $60,838.56, which is included in the budget. And I think that that's really it. We just need to keep our software. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the annual support and licensing renewal for the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement in the amount of $60,838.56.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, second by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on item four. Please poll the council.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. Item five, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you. A motion to approve the renewal of the Geographic Information System, GIS, enterprise license agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., in the amount of $35,750 for one year. The Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc., is a sole provider of licensing and support of the city's existing geographic information system. Although the company requires a three-year license agreement to receive favorable pricing, the agreement does include a termination for lack of funds clause as outlined in Article 5.2, which is contingent upon council approval of funding included in the budget on an annual basis. The annual cost of the licensing and support is $35,750, which was approved in the 2010 IT Division budget. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the renewal of the Geographic Information System Enterprise License Agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute, and an annual payment of $35,750.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, second by Councilmembers Reinhardt and Stites. Discussion on item five. Please poll the council. Missing one vote, Mrs. Sang?
I thought I did.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for tonight. Will we move on to city managers' matters?
Nothing this evening.
City attorneys' matters?
None, thank you.
City clerks' matters?
Just one. I want to remind voters, election time is coming up, and if you have not registered to vote, the deadline to do so would be October 4. You may get registration forms from my office here at City Hall. You can get those on the city website. You may also find those on the state secretary of state website, where you can register online. So any of those opportunities are available, please do so, and please vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Sang?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Councilmember Langworthy?
Yes, I'd like to thank the kids that came in today to talk about the international walk to school today. One of those was my daughter. And while we live very far from the school, we will still be actively participating in the function that day. So keep an eye out for the kids, make sure they're safe. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Demott?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Councilmember Stites?
Oh, yeah. Now that they got 38th Avenue repaved and it looks great, now take it down and take a look at the new park at 38th and Kipling, because it is really great, because they're just about done with phase one and phase two. Looks fantastic. Would be an excellent time to relocate either your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, check with one of us or staff. Please try to do a positive thing for either your family, your community, your neighbors. Check your neighbors, see if they need any help. Winter time's coming, so they might need some help. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jay?
Yes, I do. We had a proclamation tonight regarding Domestic Violence Week. I'm a diversion officer for Jefferson County, which means I work with domestic violence offenders. And my daughter is a manager in the sitting county Denver office supervising the crew that works with domestic violence victims. And the reason I'm speaking tonight is that so many times we know of a neighbor or someone we work with who we believe is experiencing domestic violence, and that is usually something that escalates. So I am suggesting to anyone who's listening to, please talk to that neighbor or that coworker, and advise them to get in touch with their county, because counties usually have a domestic violence, our police department even does, a victim advocate, and get some information as to how they can receive some help and not let it escalate into something more dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Reinhardt?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of things. I was going to ask Joyce Manwaring to please come forth to discuss the October 9 dedication of the Discovery Park. I believe you had some information you wanted to relay to the public.
I would, thank you. I'd like to invite the community out to our grand opening for Discovery Park on Saturday, October 9, at 10:00 a.m. We'll have live music, refreshments, and the park will be ready and open for use. So please join us on that morning and help us celebrate. We'll also have our public art sculpture donation, I mean dedication, our Kevin Robb sculpture that's located in the park and currently installed. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to mention that the live music is being donated by some local residents right next to the park, and they will be there playing for their neighborhood and for the city that day, so it's going to be a great deal. I was asked to read a honorary proclamation. It came in late today from Governor Bill Ritter, so I'll go ahead and read that tonight. It's an honorary proclamation from Bill Ritter, Jr., Governor, First Responder Appreciation Day on September 27, 2010. Whereas first responders sacrifice their safety and personal property in the execution of their duties to protect the public on a daily basis, and whereas first responders are the first line of defense for the public to threats and foreign, to threats, domestic and foreign, and whereas first responders stand ready to come to the aid of citizens of the United States of America 24 hours a day, and whereas first responders are a vital part of our communities, many times volunteering in our schools and other community organizations, and whereas individuals, both career and volunteer, from police, fire, EMS, search and rescue, and other organizations in the public sector come together as a collective to aid the public in the event of an emergency, and whereas the citizens of Colorado wish to honor and support all public safety officers with an annual day of appreciation, therefore, I, Bill Ritter, Governor of the State of Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 27 First Responder Appreciation Day in the state of Colorado. So thank you to all our first responders and to our police department for the city of Wheat Ridge for all the work they do. So with that, I believe we're adjourned. Mr. Goff, are we staying here or... Okay. Lobby conference room for the study session.